...community leaders trying to come after my title. But what they don't understand is I'm not ruled by a title. I'm ruled as a servant of the Most High God. And that's how I'm speaking tonight. We are sick and tired of the injustices that our people have had to endure in the city of Minneapolis. We are tired of seeing a budget that is focused very heavily on public safety while we have double-digit unemployment in the city of Minneapolis for African-Americans and other people of color. That is completely unacceptable, especially when our public safety is being jeopardized by an out-of-control Minneapolis Police Department, something that you all have known about for years. When we go out into the community, we collect story after story after story of African-American men and boys and children who are constantly being harassed and abused and criminalized by the Minneapolis Police Department. And then when something happens like the 4th Precinct occupation, we act like it's such a surprise. Well, Professor Jason Sol and I told you all months ago that we were one incident away from becoming the next Ferguson. And the only reason that this city did not burn to the ground was because of that occupation outside of the 4th Precinct. We've served as a container for the raw emotions of people of the city who were sick and tired of being sick and tired, sick and tired of elected officials and those running for office knocking on our doors but not delivering upon the promises that they ran on. Well, enough is enough. Stop running for office if you're not going to do your jobs. Create jobs, particularly for African-American men in the city of Minneapolis. It should not take an occupation for them to have a sense of purpose in our society. You all can do better than this, and we expect better than this.
Number 25, Ayesha Williams, and number 26 is Angela Connolly.
Good evening.
Welcome.
I'm Ayesha Williams, and I reside at 701 Elwood Avenue in North Minneapolis. Is this on? This is what police protection is for African-Americans in Minneapolis, particularly in North Minneapolis. This brother is cut from his pelvic up to the top of his stomach because Minneapolis Police did their job or not. I am here to oppose the increase of budget to allow an expansion for the 4th Precinct Police Station. It's not going to happen. We're not going to allow it. And if you do it today, be careful because your next steps can be your last. I want to make clear that there are so many other inequities that that money can go towards. We have told Betsy Hodges that we want an African-American Economic Development Center in North Minneapolis for African-American business owners, which would provide actual money, hmm, money for businesses to begin. We want the $605,000 to go towards resurrecting a beautiful community center in North Minneapolis on one of the empty public lots that sits on Plymouth Avenue and/or you're going to give us the 4th Precinct, one or the other. We are sick and tired of being in fear for our lives, for our children's lives, for our grandparents' lives, for our community lives. If you say you live in Minneapolis and you are part of the Greater Twin Cities, then stand with us or stand aside because we are coming. I want you on notice, Blong Yang, that this will be your last term. So enjoy your petty conversations, your silly agreements, and your mishandlings of my community for the very last time. You are a noticer, and anybody who sits with him in solidarity will be on notice too. Watch your steps because we are watching. I want you to know that we are paying close attention to your seedy agreements, and we are not going to allow it to happen any longer. Black Lives Matter! Get ready, we come!
Get ready, we come! Get ready, we come! Get ready, we come! Get ready, we come! Get ready, we come! Get ready, we come! Get ready, we come! Get ready, we come! Yep. Angela Connolly is next, number 26. After her, Nick Harper, number 27, please.
Hi, I'm back. My name is Angela Connolly. I live at 4431 Pleasant Avenue. I am vehemently opposed to the amended budget of $600,000 plus for the 4th Precinct. And we talk about accountability and transparency, but they're not just buzzwords, so I'd like to have some accountability right now. In a 2013 article for the Min Post, Mayor Hodges stated that she felt tension as she walked on the North Side, and she felt tension as she walked downtown, she felt tension as she walked through the first floor of City Hall as officers come in and out. I'm sure you felt that same tension as you showed up at the 4th Precinct. You also stated that there's a legacy of brutal oppression of people of color in this country and in the state and in this city. Last year, you wrote a letter to the community, an open letter to the community, in which you stated that we share goodwill. So I'm here to share goodwill with you and remind you that you stated that if I see you or the Chief of Police or anyone else in a position of responsibility taking steps with which I disagree, steps that I think will not work as intended or may unintentionally set us back, I invite you to assume that first I have misunderstood. Mayor Hodges, you have misunderstood. If you support Blong Yang's proposal to spend $600,000 at the 4th Precinct, you are misunderstood. That money needs to be reinvested into the community, into North Minneapolis. I live in South Minneapolis. You called for One Minneapolis. So from South to North, that money needs to be reinvested into the community. I implore you not to accept this amended budget, not to accept the proposal from Blong Yang, Blong Yang, and do what you stated that we should do, which has come to you in goodwill. And in goodwill and the fashion of goodwill, that money, as you've heard from us all today, and we represent thousands of people from the South Side of Minneapolis to the North Side, Southeast Minneapolis, Northeast Minneapolis, that money does not need to go to the 4th Precinct. It needs to go to the people who are in this room and the people that the people in this room represent.
Number 27 is Nick Harper, and number 28 is Linda Wanty. Thank you very much. Mr. Harper?
Hi, my name is Nick Harper. I live at 3023 Lindale Avenue South. I do not live in North Minneapolis, and I'm a white male, so my perspective is limited. But I do agree with what many people have already stated here today, and I do support them in what they've already stated. But I do have a couple of comments about the budget and the proposed amendments that were recently announced. As towards the First Amendment, that council member Yang is going to propose regarding the additional trainings for officers. I think that's important, and I think it's absolutely necessary that our officers receive better training concerning procedural justice and bias in particular. Although I also agree with what others have already stated, that that amendment is not going to be enough and that more is necessary, that you're going to have to do better than that. I also want to address the Second Amendment, which I oppose. I agree with many, as they've stated, to oppose the additional $605,000 for safety and access to the 4th Precinct, although I really questioned what safety and access means, considering it was not defined or clarified. This is a new amendment that hasn't really been studied or pronounced very well. I saw a media release earlier today that was backdated towards yesterday. That's tacky, don't do that. In addition to that, I think that if you really wanted to provide safety and access to the 4th Precinct, there are better ways to do it than providing it directly through the Police Department. You can also invest in the Department of Civil Rights, including hiring additional civilian investigators or policy studies for improving police culture and accountability. Thank you.
Linda Wanty, number 28, followed by Andy Pearson, number 29.
Yeah, my name is Linda Wanty. I live at 2412 Fair Place in Minneapolis, and I came here basically to hear about a budget, but I'm getting the impression that this is a Black Matters forum. And I'm very upset with the fact that these people, I believe, are going for what they need to protest for, and I agree, freedom of speech is a great thing. But I also think that there are a lot of people in my neighborhood who are afraid of Black Matters and won't speak up. And they are afraid that they're going to put the Police Department on hostage like they did for 18 days, which is very upsetting to a lot of people who are not here today. And I don't know why these people are using this as a forum. This is supposed to be about streetlights and street signs and it's not supposed to be about race.
Please let this, please excuse me, excuse me, let's be polite and let the speaker speak, please. Thank you.
Well, I just, I wanted to say that there are people who are supporting you, as well as the community is not all black, and it's not, there's Asians and there's other people besides these people, and the police are afraid.
Please, 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 please.
You're being racist! Why aren't we doing, why aren't we having All Lives Matters?
Please.
Why aren't we having, why aren't, well, I have nothing else to say.
Thank you. Andy Pearson, number 29, please. Number 29, please. Number 29, Andy Pearson. Number 29, Andy Pearson, please. Andy Pearson, followed by Candace Montgomery, number 30.
Thank you so much. Hello, my name is Andy Pearson, 2629 18th Avenue South. Now, it's speakers like the previous that reinforce the need for Black Lives Matters. And some moments like this one make me so fucking embarrassed to be like, my God! What is, what is that? All right, returning back down. The purpose of me being here today is to say I completely and totally and utterly oppose the $605,000 that would go to security and accessibility for police and community. Now, let's note the order of those words, right? Security first, accessibility later, police first, community later. Does this fit a pattern? Also, do you know how you get security and accessibility for a police precinct? It starts with not killing people, all right? It starts with not killing your community members. Can we get that straight? I also want to say that if that $605,000 was not allocated there, we could fund all the LED streetlights and a whole lot of other good stuff. I also support and thank you for the money for the community energy and for the solar streetlights program. In the rest of my time here, I'm going to talk about a few things that I have seen, all right? I did not grow up on the North Side. I grew up more sheltered, all right? I had not seen friends of mine being maced in the face. I had not seen cops dumping out the milk that people had brought so that it could clear the mace from people's eyes, clear the tear gas. I hadn't seen bulldozers used to clear an encampment. I sure as hell hadn't heard white supremacists shoot unarmed protesters in the street and then see the cops take 20 minutes to respond to that. Those are things that I saw for the first time in the encampment at the 4th Precinct, all right? I want to say one last thing. I want to say one last thing. This is incredibly important that you get this right because look at the signal that it's sending to your community. I honestly can't figure out whether Councilmember Yang and other council members proposing this are so out of touch or are playing at something or just trying to be mean. You know, what are you trying to do with us? What are you trying to do? What's the message that you're trying to send here? Think about that very carefully. Thank you so much.
Candace Montgomery, number 31, followed by Nikki Mayberry, number 32. Ms. Montgomery?
All right, thank you. My name is Candace Montgomery, 3032 10th Avenue South. Shout to the South Side. You know, I think folks have said what I would say and will continue to say what I would say, but I just want to echo it again, you know, in case like 80 corporations call you tomorrow and give you some other opinion. So I just want to re-say again that this is shameful. It's shameful that folks have to be out here tonight. It's shameful that we all have to spend time away from our families ensuring that you actually create a budget that protects us, that serves us. This is a shame. This is not democracy. We voted you in for a reason because not all of us can just sit around and do this. This is your job. We all have jobs. It's time that you invest in us and not the police. That's simple. I'm not only opposed to the amendments to add $605,000 more dollars to police to fortify, renovate, create a fortress, whatever you want to call it, I'm opposed to any budget that would spend this much on police and not on the worst in the nation racial disparities, worst in the nation. And they have continued to gotten worse since you've gone in office, Betsy. It's time that you invest in black communities. It's time that you invest in young black people. It's time that you invest in the queer, young, black, and trans folks downtown. I invite you to sit down with those folks to craft a budget that's actually going to work for us. Lastly, I think you can already see this, but this has happened in a matter of hours. We have a whole year and a half to prepare for 2017. This is about you standing on the right side of history.
Nikki Mayberry, and then followed, number 32, and then followed by Molly Glasgow, number 33.
Madam President, City Council, 10 years ago, I moved to North Minneapolis fleeing a violent rural Wisconsin. And the North Side took me in, and they saved my life. And I will never turn my back when the North Side is in danger. Y'all know me. You've seen me on your doors. You've seen me on your convention floors. Betsy, you sat on my couch, and you promised me a vision of equity. One Minneapolis. Pepper spray and billy clubs in our ribs and violence in our streets? You lied. You lied. This is not the One Minneapolis we were promised. As you've seen me on your convention floors, as you've seen me on the doors before working my ass off for an equity vision I believed in, trust me today. These are just a few of my friends. Many of us spent nights on the floor in the 4th Precinct. We've been pepper sprayed, we've been bullied, we've been pushed around, and we will not stand for this any longer. Should you vote for this amended $605,000, a disinvestment in the North Side, you can bet you will see us on your convention floors, you will see us at your fundraisers organizing and divestment, you will see us on the doors when you are primaried. We are done. Don't do this. We can do better.
Number 33, Molly Glasgow, followed by number 34, Michael Jupiter, looks like Michael Jupiter. Ms. Glasgow?
My name is Molly Glasgow. I live at 4326 Humboldt Avenue North. I'm the Vice President of Metra IBA, the Twin Cities Independent Business Alliance. I'm excited to hear that money was found in the city budget. That means there's an opportunity to make a substantial investment in community and economic development. You have heard from many community members tonight about what is important to invest in and the opportunities before us. One of those options would be to support small and independent businesses in our city, be it existing businesses who are strong and active hubs in the community, or by supporting emerging business owners and entrepreneurs. There are many examples of how to do this from around the country. One, from Salt Lake City, is to help business owners buy their buildings. Imagine that significant investment in community strength and wealth. Small businesses are ones that are doing the hiring, creating quality jobs, and are more likely to be environmentally friendly, taking advantage of existing infrastructure. Small businesses give more to local organizations, which creates a multiplier effect for the money and makes it stretch further. Millions more will stay in Minneapolis if we do more to support these businesses and create more opportunities for potential business owners. We have such an opportunity right now because Minneapolis is on top of so many lists. We've been featured in numerous top-10 lists, though we still continue to be a city with a great amount of economic and racial disparity. So let's take the momentum for how we are successful and run with it in a creative and positive way to make sure that we improve the quality of life for everyone who lives in Minneapolis, including everyone in this room. Let's make Minneapolis a leader in racial and economic equity.
Next, I have number 34, Michael Jupiter, followed by Kimberly Daniker, number 35. Number 34, Mr. Jupiter? Then let's go to Ms. Kimberly Daniker, number 35, followed by Mel Reeves, number 36.
Hello, my name's Kim Daniker. I live at 4404 15th Avenue South here in Minneapolis, and I want to give a shout-out to Black Lives Matter Minneapolis for putting this up on Facebook so that I knew to be here tonight. And I didn't have planned on my way over here, I didn't have anything planned to say, but here's what I want to share with you, is that I went over to the 4th Precinct today because I wanted to see if those barricades have been taken down yet, and they hadn't been. So I got out my cellphone camera, and I started taking pictures of it because, you know what? This is just bizarre. It's bizarre that it looks like there's like Gestapo tactics going on in North Minneapolis that I need to go out and I need to photograph this because this is like an unusual event in my life. And while I was over there, I observed that there is a barber across the street whose business is suffering because you guys decided that you needed to put up barriers to block the entrance to his parking lot from off of Plymouth Avenue. That's what I saw. I ran into a few people out there, and I chatted with them because I'm an extrovert, and that's what extroverts do, we make friends everywhere we go. And I met a woman who was on her way to the funeral home to pick up some things because her second of two babies had been killed. Both of her children have been killed. And as we conversed, I learned that she can't afford $550 for a headstone for her child. So if we have $605,000 that we can put into fortifying the 4th Precinct building, whatever that means, maybe we can take that and maybe we can pitch in to help her buy a tombstone for her baby. Maybe we can put it into small businesses on the North Side so that people can flourish economically, so that they can provide for themselves and for their families, so they don't feel like they need to go out and compete with their neighbors and their brothers and sisters for money that doesn't exist in the economy. And then finally, here's what I have to say. Hold on, I got five seconds left. Is that I went over to one side of the building where part of the sidewalk was barricaded off by a fence, and so I got out my cellphone, and I'm standing right next to the entrance to the parking lot for the squad cars. And I noticed that there was a police squad car facing the street, and there was somebody in the driver's seat, and so I looked over, and I just smiled, and I gave a friendly wave, as I do. Goodwill, that's all it was. And this officer got out of the car, and so I said to her, oh, hey, you know, I wasn't flagging you down, I was just waving, you know, nothing more. She said, what are you doing here? I said, I'm just taking a picture. Why not? And she treated me like I was suspect, like I was doing something wrong. And here's the thing, if I, as a blond-haired, white woman, would be treated that way in broad daylight, doing absolutely nothing wrong, I shudder to think what my black brothers and sisters on the North Side feel like if they ever get caught doing anything wrong. That is a travesty. We should not be putting money into a precinct building. $605,000? Are you kidding me? That money can be way better spent, you guys do better.
Number 36, Mel Reeves, and next is number 37, Pete Rus. Mr. Reeves, is he here? Mr. Reeves?
Yes. How's everybody? I'm at 1041 James Avenue North. It's always a little odd when I look across at the City Council because I've seen most of y'all and worked with y'all in different things, and most of y'all are nice people, but we're not here because you all are nice people, we're here because the system you all serve is not so nice. I think this is a teachable moment. You know, the 17 days of what we call the occupation was something that people could learn from. Ironically, on some level, the folks of the occupation did what I think the City Council and the city should be doing. The poor were fed, right? The hungry were fed, some of the homeless, right? Were given homes, right? We have real community, right? We have real community out there, and we're seeing that the city would have provided that. But I think this is a teachable moment because this tells us something about representative government. See, a real representative government, we wouldn't be here. We would have to beg them to do what we want them to do. A real representative government would make sure that those police would have gotten fired, right? A real representative government would have believed my neighbors when they said a crime was committed, right? But we're here begging you all, something is wrong. Something is wrong with the type of government where we have to come and beg folks to do what's right. That shouldn't happen, folks. And I know I have a reputation as a radical, but I'm making sense. This is true. And the other thing is, if you don't agree with the people, you sure as heck shouldn't be opposing them, all right? You shouldn't be in the way. But I think also, we're here tonight, the medium is the message here. Because in the midst of all that's going on, I can't imagine that they would be talking about budgets, talking about budgets and the police. You would think there would be an emergency meeting to talk about, how are we going to deal with our cops, right? We keep coming back and forth. So on some level, they're telling us that maybe we're lying, maybe we're not telling the truth, right? We keep filing reports, we keep complaining, and yet we come back over and over again. There's something wrong. I think you all have sent the wrong message here. You should be talking about, how do we deal with those cops that killed our brother Jamar Clark? That's what this meeting should be about. I know my time is up.
Pete Rus, number 37, followed by Ayesha Gulid, number 38. Mr. Rus?
Hi, Peter Rus. I'm representing the Minneapolis Energy Center at 324 Ninth Street. We recently were notified about the proposed redesign of Third with the partition bike routes. And I will submit written comments, so I won't take a lot of your time, but needless to say, as we've gone down the avenue and talked to folks, it's clear that there hasn't been really any effort on the part of the city to get some kind of collective agreements about what's going to occur there. And we would hope that, and I realize that there probably are the votes to approve this in the budget, but we would hope that there could be a directive to the staff to work with the property owners and the stakeholders in the area to get some buy-in from us. This is a very, very important corridor, and we would hope that we would have the opportunity to be engaged in the process. And it should have happened a long time ago. And again, I'll submit written comments and do appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Mr. Hashem Jonas is following Ayesha Gulid, so number 38 and number 39.
If I can have an absolute silence, it would really appreciate it.
Ayesha, are you taking Ayesha's spot, sir?
No, I'm taking my own spot, 39.
38 is first, Ayesha Gulid. Thank you. Sorry if I mixed you up.
Okay.
Ms. Gulid?
My name is Ayesha Gulid, and I live on 3720 28th Avenue South Minneapolis. And I've been at the precinct almost every single day, and I was one of the people who were arrested. I knew like deep down in my heart what I was doing was for a good cause. And I can't just go to school and then go to work and try to pretend that my own people are not being, that my own people are being killed. I can't just live my life and not make an active change. One Wednesday at the precinct, police attacked us protesters, and I don't want to go into details because it's very triggering for me, but eight police officers threw me on the floor. I'm 5'3", I weigh 150 pounds, and they saw me as a threat. They threw me on the floor and dragged me by my hijab, and like, there is no way that you can justify that, okay? And I just want to say that, like, they gave me a concussion. I went to the ER, and they dismissed my concerns, saying that I had a concussion. I had concussion for two weeks, my grades were suffering, and I didn't even know, I could have died, okay? Just two days ago, did I just now found out that I had a concussion. And there is no way that you can justify this and sit there while our people are dying, while they're beating up girls, me, who is, who does not even have the strength to defend And I just want you guys to know what the mayor said about what she- And I just want you guys to know what the mayor said about, when she heard this incident that happened to me, she justified it. She said that the police user, the police were justified in beating me up, and there's just, it's just very wrong to me and, and also to see other people to try to make this seem like it's an okay thing to happen, and also for the mayor, who's supposed to serve us, to try to say that it was something that was justified. That's all I have to say, but I just want you guys to know that black people are dying at the hands of police, and you can't just sit idly by and try to pretend that we're not being killed. You can't just sit there while me, who is 18 years old, I am in high school, and got beaten by eight cops, you can't just sit there and try to pretend that there is not
Mr. Jonas, you'll be followed by number 41, Carol Becker. Mr. Jonas?
Thank you. I still have a dream. It is a dream deeply rooted in the American dream. I have a dream that one day, this nation will rise up, live out the true meaning of its creed. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal. I have a dream that one day, on the Red Hills of Georgia, the sons of former slaves and the sons of former slave owners will be able to sit down together at the table of brotherhood. I have a dream that one day, even the state of Mississippi...